Welcome everyone to tonight's school board meeting. And for those of you that want to join us, please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
First on our agenda is adopting of our agenda. I'll take a motion.
I move to adopt the agenda. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so our agenda is adopted. Next on the agenda is special recognition. And this is school counselors appreciation week. And for this, I'd like to call forward Carlos Smith and other people that you may want to bring forward. And in recognition for this appreciation week, I would like to ask Director Bradford to read the proclamation.
I would be honored to. So this is the 2018 proclamation National School Counseling Week. Whereas school counselors and social workers are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors and social workers are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors and social workers help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors and social workers work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors and social workers seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society, and whereas comprehensive development school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, the Evergreen Public Schools Board of Directors recognize February 5th through the 9th as 2018 as National School Counseling Week. Thank you.
Yes.
If we can expand that to include social workers as well, that would be great. Thank you. But the National Counseling Week doesn't include social workers.
In our house it does.
In our house it does. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. As part of the recognition, I've sent out emails to principals and asked them to nominate some counselors in their building who have demonstrated exceptional work over the last year. And I would like to pass the mic along and introduce these folks to you so that we can show our gratitude and appreciate for the work that they do.
Corinne Gannon from Ellsworth Elementary.
Katie Riley from Union High School.
Rachel Zavortnik from Heritage High School.
Christine Hill, Crossline Elementary School.
Colleen Schoonover, Union High School.
Emily Kirsten-Grippe from Endeavor Elementary.
Lisa Puck from Harmony.
Josh Wrights from Columbia Valley.
Thank you. So out of all the people that were nominated, these folks could be here today. Seventeen people were nominated by their principal. The whole Union team and the whole Heritage team were also nominated, but unfortunately couldn't be here. So please join me in thanking these counselors and social workers for the good work that they do.
Oh, I always do on this kind of recognition. You know, there isn't a single one of us up here that has not had the benefit of a school counselor, social worker, that has not helped our children, whether it be for social, emotional, or career, college. We've all, all of our children have benefited from your hard work, and so we really appreciate the kinds of things that you do to help our families and our students.
I would also like to add that we know that the demands of the position have gotten much more extensive over the years, and that we understand that and appreciate the extra time and care that you've taken for our students, and just want to say thank you.
For me, it's actually recent and personal because I had a child who needed a counselor when he was in the fifth grade, and he got her four hours each day until we could figure out a solution for him. I think she's signed at Union now. I don't know. Could I name her? Jennifer Zook. She was a change agent and really loved my son when he really needed it. Not funding is enough to pay you more.
Just to reiterate what everybody else has already said, your guys' work is never done. You're always needed in our schools, and you're always there, ready to open your arms and help all of our students in our district.
I was just going to comment that when you think of the fact that we have over 12,000 students that qualify for free introduced lunch, over 1,000 students each of the last three years that qualify as homeless, the state board giving us Core 24, changing graduation requirements on an annual basis. To say your job has gotten more difficult is a huge understatement. You consider the amount of mental illness that we're dealing with in our schools, and while I know we have six different providers providing mental health counseling in our schools on a regular basis, the need is still there beyond that, and I know that that's the work that you do on a regular basis. This last summer, the board passed new governance policies that included a results policy of which has components that we're going to be talking about tonight of social-emotional learning. And so the board is recognizing that it is the school district's role to provide social-emotional learning curriculum, instruction, and growth for our students, and to monitor that. And that's a key element of what you guys provide on a daily basis. So on behalf of the community, the rest of the district, I say thank you.
And I'd like to add, I'm just huge fans of your work. I mean, as people have said here, we recognize that your job is just getting tougher and tougher, and you're not only preparing kids for their work in school now, but also for their futures, which is just huge. And with our emphasis on social-emotional learning, I mean, you guys are just right at the forefront of what we're trying to do in the district. So thank you very much for your work. Next, we have a public hearing. And this public hearing is going to be in two parts. The first part is to talk about the property adjacent to Union High School, and talking about the plans for potentially classifying that as surplus property. And then if we make it beyond that, we will be talking about the advisability of possibly selling that property. And so maybe to kick off this public hearing, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Stich to talk about the briefing on this recommendation.
The board's aware, but just to make sure everybody in the audience and in the community watching this on video is aware, the district owns approximately nine acres of property just south of Union High School. That property was purchased in 2004 with an understanding that Clark College had intended to build a branch campus adjacent to Union High School. In current discussions and recent discussions with Clark College, that is no longer their intent. So based on the change of their intent, I am recommending that the board reaffirms an earlier discussion to surplus this property in its parcel number 17616000. And I give it back to you.
Okay, thanks, John. Now we call for public testimony to see if anyone has a comment or questions about this recommendation to surplus this property. Do we have any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, I will call to the board for a motion.
Move that the board does hereby declare the nine-acre parcel of property adjacent to Union High School as surplus real property and no longer needed for school purposes.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Now we're open for board discussion. Do we have any?
Yeah, it's a good idea. It's not property that can be really beneficial to us, except for what it can bring to us as an, you know, essentially was turned out to be an investment property. So I think that the sale of it to be used for other things could be much more strict.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I guess we'll take a vote on this portion of the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so part one of the public hearing to classify this property as surplus property has passed. Now we're going to the second part of the public hearing, which I guess we're now talking about opening it up for public testimony to see if there's any comments or questions on the recommendation to put this property up for sale. So do we have any public comment questions or questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and... I move the board adopt resolution number 6010, authorizing the district to enter into negotiations with a buyer to sell surplus property located at Union High School so long as the sale price is at least 90% of the fair market value as appraised by a professionally designated real estate appraiser, and the sale of the property is proper and advisable.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any board discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the resolution 6010 has passed. We were talking about classifying the property as surplus, and we are also talking about being able to sell that property for cash. So thank you very much. So next, we're going on to our focus on student results, and we're talking about results policy number four, right? So that's citizenship. And this is our second reading. And so the board has received the reasonable interpretation and indicators from Superintendent Stich. I hand it over to you, John, for further explanation.
Okay. And I read the R4 results policy relative to citizenship in detail at the last minute or the last meeting for the record and for video, so anybody in the public can hear. Rather than going into that detail, just want to let the board know that I haven't received any comments or questions from the board, community, or staff relative to that. So at this time, I ask the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for R4 citizenship as presented for second reading and final approval.
Thanks, John. Call upon the audience for any comments or questions. Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board accept the superintendent's reasonable interpretation and indicator results policy R4 citizenship as presented for second reading and approval.
It's been moved and seconded. What kind of discussion do we have as a board?
Well, we've had quite a bit of discussion because this was one of the hardest ones to kind of wrap our arms around, to have valid interpretations, valid assessments, and indicators, and what that looks like. But I think that, John, and your folks did a good job of at least getting something going with this. It's so important that our students understand their role as citizens in our community, whether it be their school community, or the bigger community, or the world community. And so helping students kind of build that skill set is really critical for a democracy. And so I'm excited that we're embarking on it as difficult as it is, and I know that there'll be some changes along the way, but I feel really comfortable with what we've got to start with, and I appreciate that work.
I would agree, and I also think that we took this to some of our forums to get feedback from our certificated staff and others about what it meant to be a good citizen in our school. I think that over the course of the last year, the message I've taken from many patrons in our community is that they want to see good citizens that mean for our students. And so, John, I think that you've done a really good job with taking a lot of things that are vague in people's minds about what makes a good citizen and putting in a document that we can actually measure. So thank you.
Anything else?
I know we had a lot of discussions about what data we could gather, and the exact specifics is probably good right now, but the exact specifics aren't coming to mind, but I did cover some material in advocacy and the Equity Conference that might give us some additional things we could add, measurement indicators. Have to go through the material and get that ready for you. But I'm entirely in support of what we have for now, for sure.
And I would like to add, I mean, I'm really excited about this results policy because there's so many elements to this, and we were talking with the counselors here, that social-emotional learning is so huge. I mean, one of the results we're talking about in here is to be able, for our students to show respect and compassion. And so we're looking then to get results, you know, out of this with that Panorama survey to show, you know, our students showing respect and compassion. Like, are they listening to different points of view? And if there's disagreements, are they respecting each other? So we're going to be getting results, you know, from the kids about, is that, you know, truly happening in our schools or not? So I think this is a huge step forward. Questions?
I think I just want to share a conversation that I've been having with some of the cabinet members over the last week as we're looking, and we've got pretty much R3 kind of finalized to the point of bringing it back to first reading at the next meeting, and starting to look at R2, the academics. And one of the discussions we've had is that, you know, we looked at coherence governance in theory with the board passing these policies and governing through policy. But as we're making a commitment to these actual measurements and indicators, what you really find is what most business organizations say is what gets measured gets done. And it's forcing us to get into much deeper conversations about how are we really going to generate the results that these indicators are going to be measuring. So just kind of that anecdotal commendation to the board for heading down this path, and really, it does, what we're finding is it does give you a lot of power and authority to truly govern the district through policy, which is impacting what we're doing now within a cabinet that will eventually trickle down into the classroom, and what social-emotional curriculum are we going to be adopting in order to get growth with our students with this? We aren't just going to let it happen. So that's just one example of how this is really going to start impacting what happens.
Anything else? Okay, so we'll take a vote on the approval of the reasonable interpretations and indicators for R4 citizenship. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so they're... Okay, so it's approved. So yeah, thank you. So now we're going on to the next part of the agenda, which is monitoring district operations. And we're talking about operational expectations 12 first, which is facilities. And we're at the stage of a second reading for the reasonable interpretation and indicators for OE 12. And so I throw it over to you, John.
Similarly, there's been no, you know, I read it in detail at the last meeting, and there's been no comments from the board, public, staff, administration. So at this time, I recommend the board accepts reasonable interpretation and indicators for operational expectations OE 12 facilities as presented for second reading and approval.
Okay, so I call upon the audience for any questions or comments. Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board accept the superintendent's reasonable interpretation and indicators for operational expectation OE 12 facilities as presented for second reading and approval.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have discussion as a board?
The only thing I have is just on this one and the next one that will be coming up is kind of reiterating in a way what John's talking about. This is the way for the board to have accountability regarding the operational side of the House, and for the public to understand what's going on, to have more clarity and transparency. And so I appreciate both of these policies for that reason.
Anything else? Okay.
I would note that this does have naming of facilities, which you've got a policy change later in the agenda.
Right.
So the intent was just, and it was highlighted with quotation marks, that we'll remove the quotation marks once the policy actually does say naming.
So at this time, I'll take a vote. All in favor of accepting as a second reading and approving OE 12, the reasonable interpretation and indicators for facilities, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that has passed. Next on the agenda in this portion, which is monitoring district operations, is operational expectations 10, which is learning environment. And this is our first reading. And John, if you could describe to us then what you have in this report for reasonable indicators and interpretations.
Sorryfully, I haven't already read this one. So I'm going to go through this. OE 10 deals with the learning environment and the commitments or the expectations the board has for the...
John, I wonder, before you continue, is there a spare Chromebook or something that I could use? The battery on this one just died. Yeah. I thought I did, and...
She always does.
All right.
Ready for everything, girl.
All right. No, it's right here.
So OE 10 describes the expectations for the learning environment. The overall expectation is that the superintendent shall establish and maintain a learning environment that is equitable, personalized, flexible, responsive, safe, respectful, and conducive to effective learning. I've provided some definitions of different terms within the preamble. Getting into the actual elements, 10.1 is the superintendent will maintain a climate and culture that is characterized by support and encouragement for high achievement for all students. The monitoring of that evidence will be presented through our Panorama survey. We have a student culture and climate survey, a teacher culture and climate survey, and a student social and emotional learning survey with different subsets. Overall, the expectation is that all students will feel welcome and valued for who they are and what they bring to their school environment. All students will believe that they have the capacity to learn and grow intellectually and emotionally through their school experiences, and all students feel challenged through their academic work and goals, and all students are provided opportunities for agency and choice to personalize their academic journey. And those surveys should be able to get those questions from those three different perspectives, the two student surveys and the one staff survey. The next item, 10.2, superintendent will ensure that all policies and procedures regarding discipline are restorative in nature, collaboratively developed, appropriately communicated to students and parents, and enforced consistently using reasonable judgment. Much of this, even though we're trying not to highlight process, but rather highlight outcomes, because of the way this is worded, we really did have to fall back and say some of these are process. So the evidence of compliance would be the district policies and procedures in handbook references relative to the establishment and implementation of student restorative discipline philosophy, restorative practices implementation guide and training implementation plan. So we already do have an implementation guide that was developed last year, and it was distributed this fall, and we'll be putting together what that implementation timeline looks like for the board, the implementation plan. The board will also be presented with communication plans from the previous year for students and families from districts and schools, which outline the scope and restorative nature of the district discipline process. So sharing with you how we actually communicated that out. And then from an outcome standpoint, looking at school discipline data, we'll be providing system-level disaggregated disciplinary data for expulsions and suspensions from our SWISS, the school-wide information system, data on major referrals, and our disproportionate discipline data that we're provided by the state. So we'll be using that as evidence, and once we've established benchmark levels on that, we'll be coming back to the board in the first monitoring report and talking about what is the threshold level of compliance. But without all the baseline data collected, we just said, this is the data we're going to bring you, and then we'll have that discussion next year during the monitoring report. Additionally, we have Panorama Student Culture and Climate Survey and the Student Social and Emotional Learning Survey, and there's sections on student-teacher relationships, school safety, and self-management. So we'll be looking at what are those benchmark levels that we have off of the survey that we give this year and recommend recommended net levels. The nice thing about this is we'll have national norms as well on the Panorama survey. So what we would anticipate is that we would set our goals, that we would be a certain percentage of that national norm. On 10.3, superintendent will assure that all confidential student information is appropriately collected, used, and protected. We looked at providing the board the summary of all claims of inappropriate loss of student personally identifiable information over the past year. Any such claims will be evidence of noncompliance unless they're accompanied by a summary of the district investigation and response, which misindicate that procedures were communicated and not followed, therefore causing the violation. So if I create procedures and communicate and train people, and they don't follow those procedures, and that results in the loss, I'm not, while the district is accountable, my performance isn't impacted by that, and we will deal with that as an HR issue. But if we do lose information because of inadequate procedures or training or processes, then that's a noncompliance. Also, providing the board a summary of all district data sharing agreements we have with external organizations that have the ability to access and share critical business information or student academic records from the past year, so that you get an assurance that we are actually signing contracts that protect our information. I'll provide the board with a summary of all physical district record storage locations, which will include the types of records, duration requirement for retention, and types of physical securities in place to prevent loss or damage, and provide the board with a summary of the software protection system and a list of any hacking of district data that resulted in theft or damage over the past year. And then also, a final indicator would be a lack of instances where confidential student information was inappropriately shared by employees as evidence of reasonable investigation and resolution, or evidence of reasonable investigation and resolution of such complaints. So if we have any examples that come up that either we share with you or you hear about, that would be noncompliance. On 10.4, superintendent may not tolerate any behaviors, actions, or attitudes by adults who have contact with students that hinder the academic performance or the well-being of students. So again, this is one where we're looking at the employee handbook, including employee expectations and the process for enforcement, so that I have evidence to you that I've set clear expectations on supporting student learning through our adult behavior, then either the absence of complaints provided in writing, or the summary of the total number of written complaints against staff and volunteers and the average time from submission to closure. So if we do have complaints, you would expect me to deal with those in a timely manner, so we'll be letting you know how long it took to resolve each one of those. And we did use written complaints on that as a very hard indicator that would trigger us to be able to add that to our summary that we'd be bringing back to you, because verbal complaints sometime are hard to be able to track and to know who actually was told when. And then we also would provide Safe Schools data regarding employees' understandings of expectations and legal requirements. So we'll give you an update on where we are with the number of employees that have completed that. Section 5, superintendent may not permit unruly behaviors on school property and at school-sponsored events by students or by adults that disrupt learning or that are disrespectful or dangerous. And this is the last section in 10, and so what we will be providing to the board is a summary document of district event behavior expectations and the methods of communication of these expectations to participants and spectators. When I read this, this really focuses on like our extracurricular activities or students on travel when they're off of our property or at non-school day type situations. In addition to that, we would give a summary of the rates and types of discipline incidences responded to outside of the school day, either on school property or at school-sponsored events. So number one being, are we actually setting and communicating those behavioral expectations? And two, what type of incidents have we had, and what's the rate of those that we would share with the board? So that's what we have. So that's what we have for OE 10 on the school learning environment. We're still working on OE 11, which is a school instructional program that kind of goes hand-in-hand with this and also sort of bridges into R2, the academic indicators, as well as R3. So it's going to... As we put that one together, it's much more detailed on what does the actual classroom environment look like for the instructional program. So with that, at this time, I recommend the board accept the reasonable interpretation and indicators of operations expectations OE 10, the learning environment as presented for first reading, and move it forward for second reading and approval. And also remind the audience that we did discuss this in workshop a couple, three weeks ago. So this isn't the first time the board's heard this and had the opportunity to provide feedback.
Thanks, John. Is there any comments or questions from the audience? Like to come forward and to the podium and state your name and address. That'd be great.
My name is Angie Connors, and I live on 90th Avenue. And my question is, you are sending these surveys to teachers and students. What about students who can't speak for themselves or who aren't of an age that can speak for themselves? Why are surveys not being sent for their parents to fill out on behalf of them? As far as their learning environment, if they're getting what... I mean...
The survey will go from 3rd through 10th grade. And it's a computer-based survey that we do. And so the student has to be able to actually take the survey and read the survey to a certain extent.
And students who don't have that ability or can't communicate properly?
Our plan is that all students 3rd through 10th grade will be taking the survey. And we also have a parent component of the survey, parent community component, that we're going to be rolling out as well.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll now call for a motion.
I recommend the board accepts the reasonable interpretations and indicators for operational expectation OE 10, learning environment as presented for first reading, and move it forward for a second reading and approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. What kind of discussion points do we have as a board?
This is another one that's going to evolve as we... You know, since this is our first go at this, I see this as another one that will evolve with the data that we collect and to address issues such as Ms. Connors has brought forward. So but I think this is a really good start to things.
Data and collecting and hearing from our students. I mean, that was part of one of the board's goals at the beginning of this, was more feedback from not only obviously our student voice, but from staff and parents and our community members. And so there's part of that and getting, you know, that voice and feedback in a variety of ways.
I guess one comment I have or question, maybe to follow up with what you were saying as well. I mean, I just wanted further clarification then about the panorama, the panorama survey. So that's something we haven't done yet, right?
We piloted it last spring.
Okay.
And are rolling out more components of it this year than we did last year. So this will be our first full year of implementation.
So in the pilot, then, did we have any issues where students weren't able to access or take the test or the survey, excuse me?
I don't think we did have... Yeah, Jay's nodding no. So we didn't have any issues with, you know, I was in one of the classes, the first class that gave it, and we had people there assisting students as need be. There was some terminology that this 3rd grade class struggled with. And so we're working to try to get better guidance to the teachers to be able to help the students in administering the test. Jay, if you want
Your comment is that there are accommodations built into the software that issues the survey?
What about for our English language learners?
That's good to know.
And I did wonder, given Ms. Connors' question, whether you were talking about noncommunicative students or other high-needs kinds of circumstances or...
Almost all these questions are like on a five-point scale of, it says, do you feel comfortable at school? Always, sometimes, never. You know, so it has like five different responses that the students were able to give to each one of those prompts.
You have a teacher helping you. Yeah, I understand your concern because there's always that in surveys where, you know, maybe you feel pressure to answer it one way or the other. But I think in the results that we get, especially if we compare it with other national surveys, that we can kind of get a baseline. Because there's always going to be people that will answer that way or not feel comfortable or not know what to answer. But I'm hoping, and like Victoria mentioned, if this is the first year, we can get that indicator of, you know, and then move it forward as we need.
And I think when we're finished with our meeting here tonight, if you'll stick around a little bit, I think we can maybe get you some more, someone who can talk to you more thoroughly about it so that we make sure you feel comfortable with what's happening. Or have any other questions that you...
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Well, then I guess I did have a follow-up question then to that. So are the survey results anonymous? Like every person, like just lumped into a database?
They can be, or we can take them by individual students at a district level. And we can turn on and off who gets to see whether the teacher would get to see individual student responses or just a composite of the class. And that's what we're kind of having discussions on too.
I see, okay.
Because, you know, part of this is we want to be able to correlate this with other things that are happening in a student and their academic career, the social-emotional development. And to be able to have all of these data points around one individual student is much more informative to us on what do we need to change from a system standpoint than just taking it as a group. When we did it this last spring as the pilot, I don't believe we had the individual student stuff turned on where we could look at. And Chris is nodding no. Yeah, I didn't think we did.
So it was more lumped by grade level and...
For the pilot, yeah, it was just lumped by, here's your grade level.
Okay.
Matt has some comments? There's the portion that talks about school environment is aggregated, at least into the groups of classes that we usually sort for data collection. But the individual questions are something you want to keep individualized for the sake of the kid, huh? Is that right? Right.
So that you can individualize the, find out what the needs are of individual students so you can get them the assistance that they need. I want to make sure I'm catching out because the video doesn't get your voices when you're in the audience.
It's kind of doing the same thing.
Yeah, and while on this one, we relied on panorama. When we get to R3, that we talked about in workshop, we do a combination of panorama and at the elementary grades, we're able to actually lift all the behavioral scores off of the elementary report cards. And we can correlate that then to the social-emotional by the student and by classroom. And we're having discussions right now on how we want to revise what those behavioral scores are that we have on the elementary report cards, what the rubric is for teachers so that we have greater consistency on how those are put in. So then you'd have a teacher perception and a student self-reported perception that you could then take a look at and compare those to.
And the data itself, whether or not it's aggregated or disaggregated, is still bound by law. That's why I like to see the indicators of compliance include a mention of FERPA, a mention of the data sharing agreements, and the Public Records Act. But we're still going to keep private information private, including how a student feels. That's something that's between the student and the people helping that student and not...
And only people with a legitimate educational interest.
That's the one.
That's the term you want.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, any other comments about OE 10? So it's been moved and seconded. I'll now, I guess we'll now take a vote to approve the first reading of OE 10. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're passing the first reading. And this will be brought forth at our next board meeting for a second reading and approval. Next on our agenda is the matters reserved for board action. And we have two items here. The first item is to revisit policy OE 12 facilities because we're talking about a slight revision to that policy. You want to describe that revision, John?
Yeah, as we were updating some of the district operations policies that you've remanded to me, one of the ones I came across that we were getting ready to update was on naming of school buildings and realized that OE 12 did not include that as a right reserved by the board. So I brought that to the board's attention at the workshop. We took a look at this, and I'm bringing this for first reading so that under board policy OE 12, item 5 would be changed to read, what it currently says is build, lease, or renovate buildings. And it would be changed to read build, lease, renovate, or name buildings. So that you're clearly saying, I do not have the authority to name buildings. You retain that, and our policy reflects that, our district operations policy.
We want all the credit for the really great names we give our schools.
That's right. You can have that.
Victoria Bradford School.
So I...
We never name them after alive people.
Sorry.
Yeah, so I would recommend that the board accepts the revision to OE 12 facilities to include retaining the right to name buildings and move it forward for a second reading and adoption.
Okay, thank you, John. And anyone in the audience with any questions or comments about this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I recommend the board accepts the revision to board policy OE 12 facilities to include the board retaining the right to name buildings and move it forward for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Open to conversation or questions by the board?
I just, because I've been through this a number of times over the years, I just have to say that the, having it be kept with the board and going through the public process that we do every time and really having it, and to me, it just is a really important public thing for us to do, that we all are engaged in it. So because those buildings are around for a while.
And...
When we replace them.
And we involve the students in that as well, right?
We do, we do.
Yeah, for as long as I can remember, there's been a public process for naming buildings that was overseen by the board. And the final decision rests here.
Comments? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We're talking about approving the first reading of this policy revision. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we passed the first reading. That'll be brought forth at our next board meeting for a second reading and approval. The second item in this section has to do with the student school calendar for 2018-19. And this is a first reading. So John, do you want to describe what we have here?
Yeah, so the calendar that we're presenting has a few nuances that are a little bit different. We'll be start planned, the planned start date is Tuesday, the 28th of August. So we would have a four-day week, that first week, instead of traditionally, or the last couple of years, we've had a three-day week. We would be taking, having no school the week of Thanksgiving again this year, similar to last year. And we've communicated this out to a lot of the other, or all the other local districts through the Clark County Superintendent's meeting. So I made them aware of that so that they could hopefully adopt that same type of a calendar to align with, for Cascadia Skills or Tech Academy. This year, we were able to align two full weeks in December. But we would go through December 21st as a school day. Not all our neighboring districts like that. There wasn't enough shopping days before Christmas. So but we do have two full weeks at Christmas, including three weekends within that. One of the other changes we did in agreement with the Evergreen Education Association is traditionally, we've had a four-day weekend in February, taking the Friday off, which would be this upcoming Friday where we have no school. To make that a more viable potential snow day, and also to have it later in the years, a snow day, and also to break up March a little bit more, we had an agreement that we move that Friday to March 18th next year. So it is a potential snow makeup day, and we would only have a three-day weekend for President's Weekend next school year. Spring break, we've coordinated with all the other local districts, is again, the first full week of April. And then you can see there's kind of a somewhat convoluted snow makeup schedule, depending on how many days. So, you know, the first snow makeup day, if I remember this right, would end up going to June 14th if we only had one day. But if we had two snow makeup days, we wouldn't want to push out and just have school on Monday only, that week of June 17th. So we would do June 14th and include that March 18th. And then if there's, or actually, no, March 18th is the first day. Janay's going to correct me. March 18th is the first snow makeup day.
Uh, second.
The second one?
June 14th.
Oh, so I did have it right. June 14th. And then if there's two, it's June 14th and March 18th. But then if there's three, we would go June 14th, June 17th, June 18th, and we would still take the March date off as a no-school day because that would push out into two days. We're really trying to avoid having just June 17th as a school day as the last day of school, was the discussion. So that's what I have. We got input from all of the employee groups. Right now, I think we've got complete agreement. So with that, I would present to you or recommend to the board, accept the student school calendar for 2018-19 as presented and move it forward for second reading and adoption.
Thank you, John. Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
I recommend the board accepts the student school calendar for 2018-19 as presented and move it forward for a second reading and adoption.
Have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion as a board?
I just have one maybe comment to make. But it feels like every year, it seems like every calendar, it's like been, one year we start before Labor Day, one we start after Labor Day, kind of depending on when the date of Labor Day falls. And it feels like that's the number one question that arises from families prior to school starting. So and I'm sure we'll get it again this year about why we started school before Labor Day. So I just want to, you know, make sure, it sounds like we have agreement from all the association groups. So that's the main thing. And...
We're trying to avoid getting out into that third week of June.
And that is always my answer to the parents is that, well, we're going to be out June 13th. And if we have snow days, we're not going to be extended until almost the beginning of July.
Right.
So I think that should be our message going forward with that. And it gives enough breaks throughout the school year, too.
Yes.
The other thing, I guess the other, I do have some more comments. The other thing, I wanted to make sure, because last year was the first year that we did the full week of Thanksgiving. And it seemed like it was received well from, that was in a week that they enjoyed having it off, and two weeks at Christmas. Was there any feedback to that? Okay. Well, I'm just, yeah, I'm just curious, but...
Yeah, yeah, that would be good. So everybody can hear your comments.
That'd be helpful.
Generally, we sent out surveys to our membership. We got about, as we usually do, about two-thirds of our membership to answer. About, I don't think anybody hated it. About half of our, it was pretty split as to whether they wanted it again or not. And I think a lot of it circulated around winter break. The real feedback I got was they did not want another split winter break with us going to school for two or three days in a given week and not really usually utilizing three weekends in the break. And so for the most part, a lot of the gun-shyness to a full Thanksgiving break was they saw that that might have to be what is the trade. saw that that might have to be what is the trade, is to have a split winter break. This calendar accommodates both. And so for the most part, the feedback is pretty good. Really, all this does is kind of captures what our traditional calendar is, only starting one day earlier and ending one day later to get that, that week-long Thanksgiving break. I know my membership enjoys naturally the week, but I think a lot of our families do as well, especially if you gotta leave town and don't have to fly on the busiest flying day of, of the year.
And I think that's one of the reasons why super superintendent's speech brought that forward is that we were seeing an increase in attendance.
Don't go, Rob. Don't go.
More questions.
And so that was one of the reasons why we brought that forward. And we tried it this last year because we were losing kids those first couple of days and staff members that were needing to early travel plans. So I know that the several staff members that I talked to enjoyed having that full week of Thanksgiving, so. But we did it, that it's been
Okay, I have a question for both of you, just because I'm not sure who to aim it at. Because I, I don't know why, I have it in my head and I could be wrong, that those first two days were also opportunities for professional development, the first two days of
It's non-contractual. We offered professional development and we had a number of teachers that took advantage of it.
Well, that's what, that was going to be my next question, is do we know how many teachers took advantage of that professional development time? Because I know we had
Trying to remember how many on Monday. Chris, do you remember?
About forty.
Forty?
If you were holding up four, I thought you weren't going to say four.
I was thinking it was forty or fifty that took advantage of it.
Okay. Because that was the same time that we did the, when the board had their teacher input
On Tuesday, right?
That Tuesday. That's what I, okay, I wanted to make sure I was on the right
And from a long-term standpoint, if the state continues to increase the number of total professional development days, I would prefer that we don't just front-load everything in August, that we have some embedded during the school year and that gives us those days to be able to add in professional development days.
No, I think that's good. Yeah, because I know we didn't have a huge group at the, the, but I understood why, because they were gone on vacation.
And one of the things, we still do need to sort out, this calendar doesn't have yet, it's kind of the skeleton calendar you guys always provide upfront, we still have to sort out, there is one additional in-service day coming from the state this year that we haven't quite figured out. We haven't figured out what we're doing, how we're doing it yet.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
I remember growing up in the district and always starting the week before Labor Day and never really being troubled about that. But, and I don't remember when the 180-day requirement came in, but the calendar is, seems like it's gotten tougher and tougher to do every single year because of all of the increasing requirements. And so I recognize this calendar as a real, a real significant effort. A lot of negotiation had to have gone on in order to get to where you are today. And I appreciate that. And thank you for doing all that good work.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded as a first reading for the school calendar for next school year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it'll be brought forth at our next board meeting for a second reading and approval. The next thing on our agenda is the board consent agenda. We have a number of minutes that we're approving. Our school board meeting on January 23rd, our faith-based partnership breakfast on January 24th, the Evergreen Citizens Schools Annual Bowling Tournament on January 28th, our school improvement plan presentation on January 30th. We had a principal-for-day luncheon on February 2nd and we had another school improvement plan presentation on February 6th. I'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
For approval of the consent, board consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we have the superintendent's consent agenda. Any discussion? I have a point. Due to remote interest in, that's for this one, right? Due to remote interest in Microsoft stock, I have to recuse myself from accounts payable warrant voucher number 34129. Any other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the superintendent's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's passed. Next, we have the superintendent's report. John?
I just got a couple of things tonight. One, last week on the 8th at about 1 o'clock or 1:05, our IT department delivered the final cart out to York. I'm sure you saw the tweets and the Facebook. We are a one-to-one district and I just want to commend everybody in this district who has put in a ton of work over the last three and a half years, three and a half to four years to turn the board's vision into a reality. So that was pretty exciting. Also attended the upward-bound open house. We had them here at the board meeting a couple of weeks ago presenting and they had a really nice open house. A couple of board members attended as well, as well as Mayor McInerney Ogilvy and Chief of Police McElvein. So it was nice to see their attendance and support of that event. Just to give you a heads up, next week on the 20th at 1 o'clock, Rebecca Sklute will be doing a visit at Heela High School. She's in town for another event, so we just found that out. So excited, she's going to do a tour of the school, a couple photo ops and finally, after all these years, we're going to have the author of the book at the school.
All right.
What's that date again?
The 20th. So next Tuesday.
At 1 o'clock?
At 1 o'clock at Heela.
So we can go?
Check with Elizabeth. Check in with Elizabeth. And then the last thing I have, I guess we have a bond election tonight, so.
Oh, yeah. That's right.
So we've got a little less than two hours. We'll find out how busy we're going to be or how we'll be busy starting tomorrow.
I think it's the second one.
We're going to be busy either way, so.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, John. Do we have any board comments?
I have a couple.
Okay, go ahead, Rob.
Did a few things between then and now. We're not going to read it all out, but
It's a little big packet.
Yeah, well, when did we last meet? Was January 23rd. And since then, where am I going? Two, actually three, but two for, for board work. And the first one was the Wasda Legislative Conference and Day on the Hill in Olympia, where school directors and superintendents and business officers gathered together to review our common agenda and then go into meetings with the legislators, all of them, as many of them as we could get, and talk to them about that and how these three groups of elected and hired officials and community leaders feel about education policy. I did not get a sense from any of those meetings that there were any major changes or fixes to education policy coming after last year's effort to get the McCleary fix finished. There will probably be just a few minor technical changes and really, especially the people who worked hardest on it, like Ann Rivers and Paul Harris and Monica Stonier, they really communicated that this year, the legislature wants to finish on time and not have more extended sessions as compared to, I guess, the last 12 or 13. Always around something, but lately around education policy. And so we could expect a little bit of stability coming from this year into the next, even if that stability came with a few challenges. After coming home from that, I went to Washington DC for the National School Board Association's Advocacy Institute and Equity Symposium. The Equity Symposium was on the Saturday, the 3rd. And then the Advocacy Institute was on the Sunday through Tuesday, this first full week of February. And a lot of insights from the equity part. The lectures and keynotes and breakout sessions seemed to communicate to me that what we're trying to do with our results policies, our equity efforts in Evergreen, very similar in intent and much larger in scope than the programs that I was told about in those breakout sessions. Talking about things like jobs for America's graduates, you know, 40,000 students in the last 39 years have been served by that program. There were a couple of magnet schools and charter schools presenting that had specifically targeted vulnerable subpopulations of students, minorities in the middle of New York City who may have never seen a farm, that sort of thing, with targeted programs that brought them into a job at graduation and maybe even close to an associate's degree and certificates like that. We've got balls like that juggling in the air to do that for all students. I actually asked them, it's like, okay, we've got all these neat programs and ideas and you're helping 10,000 students a year or 400 students a year or something like that, but I have 400,000 students in my state with poverty. There wasn't really an answer for that question yet. So we may end up creating the answer for other systems that want to write this large if we're successful with our efforts with respect to personalized learning and equity. Now, I don't want to say by that that it wasn't a good weekend with a lot of sincere people, all of them dedicated to good for kids, but there's something special here and that's worth recognizing. The conference closed with, I'm going to get this name right, Robin D'Angelo speaking about racial fragility and opening conversations about the largest friction points that majorities and minorities have in the country, race. And so we got into a lot of conversations about race, both. And actually, that also happened in the Wasda Legislative Conference, the morning break keynote, not the morning keynote, but the morning caucuses. One of them was about equity and we also ended up discussing race in a productive way. I'm, it's been really enlightening to have those conversations go on. I brought back some materials and some of those ideas and imagine we'll be talking about that in the future. Of course, I also noticed that Evergreen Public Schools had a large role in the diversity and equity portions of leadership Clark County. Carl Smith was in attendance there along with myself and I'm thinking four other, I think we have five people from the district, including me, in that program right now. That, interesting because the district got both to focus on presenting about equity and some key people got to learn some more about equity. That's, experience is worth doing. They brought in the diversity, I don't know, call him the chief diversity officer of WSUV, Dr. Ford, I think his name is, who brought us through some activities. And so we're getting a fusion of perspectives that I don't think we've had in this, quite this way before. Wanted to make mention of that activity as well because it's very worthwhile to have people on our staff go through this purpose. What else? Mountain View and Union were at a robotics competition last weekend and, well, they didn't pass on to any of the higher levels. They acquitted themselves very well in the competition and had a good time and just glad to see those opportunities persisting for kids as well.
Thanks, Rob. Thanks for taking all the time and dedication to represent us both in Olympia
It was a lot, wasn't it?
Thanks.
And I appreciate you filling in for me in DC because I couldn't go and so I, you stepped up to the plate on that one. I really appreciate it.
Oh, and of course, we had the meeting with Jamie Hara Butler.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that part. Ah, have to get my head together. And that meeting also indicated that whatever is happening in the Congress in DC, we're all pretty much swept along by it. But we did thank her personally for her yes vote on, on reauthorizing the CHIP program because we rely on that funding and those benefits for those kids to keep them healthy and also keep some institutions in our schools. She was pleased to hear that. I talked with her about the things that, you know, I talked a few meetings ago about how impressed I was at Pioneer Elementary with some of the classrooms we saw there. And I told her about some of those classrooms and, and just point blank said, you got to see some of this. And she said, yes, I want to. So scheduling is probably the biggest issue there, but I did want to make sure that that got mentioned.
Right. Great. Thanks, Rob.
Yeah. Okay.
Welcome back.
Thanks.
Any other comments from the board?
I just want to follow up on the upward-bound open house that we went to. John mentioned it in his report. Rob and I were able to attend and I just want to give, Evergreen made the space. They were called on to try to find that room for that program and kind of that college prep area. The work of Bill Omen, he was actually recognized that day by the LULAC council for making this happen. And we were able to provide this program in our school, which provides college assistance really ready to the next step. We've got 20 Evergreen students in it, 20 Heritage students, and there's 20 effort. And I know that we have other variations of college-ready programs and classes in our schools. And I would just, I would just encourage the school district and us to continue to look at ways. We have a lot of students that need that help and that extra push to get them to that next level. And so whatever we can do as a district, make sure that we have programs in place to get those kids.
You. Any other comments?
I did. On the second, I went to the Empowerment Unity Social. John and his wife were there and it was the Friday evening at Evergreen High School. Erin Jones was the keynote speaker and then they had some other students and community leaders there to speak. It was, you could tell there was just a lot of passion and emotion in, in what people were presenting and I think it's a good start to further conversations. And I like to see things that students lead that, so, yeah, that was good.
Comments?
I just want to, I guess, comment about the annual ECS bowling tournament. My very first one that I got the pleasure of attending, it was an amazing experience and just wanted to publicly congratulate the Evergreen Education Association and the Central Labor Council for winning the trophy. They did win. I think we actually, the board got second.
Oh, really?
So we were very, very close. So congratulations, you guys. You guys looked really good with that, that trophy, I have to say.
What was the score?
But we're getting it next year.
We did have the cutest shirts.
We did.
Just saying.
Anything else? Okay, we'll go on to the next item, future agenda items. Do we have any to bring forward? Okay, I don't see any, so let's go on to citizens' comments. This is the time of the meeting that anyone in the audience can speak to the board three minutes on any topic, as long as it's not legal or personnel-related.
Yes, this is Angie Connors again. The topic is communication.
Okay, yeah. Hi.
Hi. My name is Angie Connors and I live on 90th Avenue. And the biggest issue that I'm having and one of the reasons I'm here tonight, because of this bond measure that you guys have sent me, you guys have called me, you've sent me postcards, I've gotten mailers, I've gotten everything imaginable from this school board wanting me to vote on this. But this year, I really needed help from the school district. I needed help for my kids to get them in a school because you don't have standard special education throughout every school. My kids have been in five schools since they were in kindergarten, they're in seventh grade. They've been in three elementary schools and they're in their second middle school. I sent you guys an email. I'm not sure if you received it, but I did send you guys, the board specifically, an email basically outlining the struggle I had this year. I haven't received any response back. It just seems very ironic to me that you guys want me, you guys send me everything you can when you want my money and you want me to support you and you want me to, to be there for you, but I really, I needed the school board's help. I pulled my kids out of school for what equaled a month because they weren't getting what I felt that they needed to get in their school. Sorry. Okay. It's okay. It is so hard to be a special ed parent. And it's hard whenever you have to fight and fight and fight for them and you feel like you're up against a wall and you don't have any support. And when a parent comes to the point where they're getting a hold of the district and they're they're reaching out to the board of directors, then things have gone too far. Things aren't happening. I didn't pull my kids out of school because I wanted them to be out of school. There was a problem. I went to the school, I followed the steps I should have been following. Special services won't talk to me anymore. I stood in their office and demanded a meeting with all of my documentation showing how the school was not following my son's IEP. They finally granted. I had to request two, two in-district transfers to get my kids into a school where they're now thriving. It just, it doesn't seem right that special ed is not standard throughout the district. It doesn't seem right that my kids, one of now who has developed a social disorder because he's had, he's had to move five schools. It doesn't seem right that I should have to be up here upset because I can't get people to communicate with me when I need it, that those ballots are in my mailbox, those flyers are in my mailbox, those phone calls are on my phone. That's why I'm here. I think communication should go both ways.
We did see your letter and it was my understanding that, just like you just said, that they were now in a school that was meeting their needs. So I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
When I originally asked for help, nobody contacted me for over a week. The only person who contacted me was the person who did the, the in-district transfers. And she only contacted me because she noticed that nobody else had contacted me and wanted to make sure that my email did not go unanswered. And she took my documentation and sent it on to get, to actually grant the transfer. There's no, there's nothing anywhere that shows that, hey, parents, guess what? When you're denied a transfer, an in-district transfer, you have the right to appeal that. That's not written anywhere. So when my kid's original appeal was denied before things got to as bad as they got to at their school, I didn't know that I had the option to submit the documentation, to appeal it and to say, hey, let's get to this before what happens, happened, the ultimate blow-up with my son that had happened. Had, had I known that, I might have prevented the incidents that happened that got him to where they were. So I just think that we're a partnership here. That's what I've always, I've always tried to communicate with the principals, communicate with the teachers. I've always, you know, tried to, to cultivate a, you know, environment of communication with all of my son's teachers, staff, everything, because I know they're not perfect. Believe me, I know. And I know they're hard. That's what special ed is, hard and it really sucks at times. But when they close that door, you're knocking on the next door and you're knocking on the next door and you're knocking, and when you don't feel like you're getting anything because nobody wants to respond to you, I guess I kind of, I had kind of hoped that even the board would be like, we got your email, thank you. We're looking into, you know, standardizing, maybe even the grading. Why are they graded one way that shows they're passing at Covington and yet they don't turn in one assignment and they're failing at Pacific? You know, that doesn't make sense to me as a parent.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your comment. We'll be following up with you outside the meeting. Any other comments? Hey, at this time, we'll be going into recess to sign papers and then after we come out of recess, we'll be having a workshop in Large Green Conference Room and we'll be talking about the Operational Expectations OE3, which is community stakeholder relationships. We'll be talking about a board meeting debrief, a legislative update, and a superintendent update. We are now in our session.